Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Webster Central School District Business Meeting, August 17th. Would you all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as a law.
Thank you. Our first order of business is to ask for a motion to move out of executive session. Mike, second by Janice, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. The second order of business is to amend the agenda. We had a couple different business items to add. We have a policy committee update to add. And can I have a motion, please, to amend the agenda with those items? Linda, in a second, by Jen, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we will either remain seated.
Pull your microphone closer to you.
Okay. I apologize. We will remain unmasked and seated and socially distanced if that's okay with everyone. Moving forward, we have our school district's attorney with us this evening, Colleen Heinrich from Ferrara-Forenza, and she is here to speak to us about Board of Education members' responsibilities and roles and that of the community. And we're grateful that she's able to be here with us this evening. So, welcome, Colleen.
Thank you. Just want to make sure everyone can hear me. So what I've been asked to talk about is what the role of the Board of Education is. And so everyone has an understanding of why these people are in front of you and what their authority is. So first and foremost, I want to thank all of you for choosing to serve as a board member or volunteering for this important role. We know we have new board members this year embarking on this adventure in a very difficult circumstances, so thank you for spending your time and volunteering to do this important job. One common denominator that we find in every person who sits on a board is their desire to serve in the best interest of students. While members may disagree on what it looks like on various occasions, unity in that goal results in a successful board, time and time again. Since we're in the profession of education, the Board has asked me to share with the public some information on the role and the responsibilities of the Board of Education. New York State is unique. Here, we call upon a group of laypeople to work hand-in-hand with our trained teachers and administrators to operate our school districts in the best interest of our students. It's a kind of crazy system when you really think about it, but it does work when everyone has the same goal. A Board of Education can only operate or take action as this unit, this unit together. Individual board members have no authority, have no individual authority, and must come together as a sitting board to fulfill its responsibility. The Board of Education only has the authority that's given to it by the New York State education law. So when the board is sitting together, it is fulfilling two duties: of providing policy guidance to the district superintendent and administrators, and fiscal oversight. The district administration then carries out that policy and those steps under the education law. It's important to note that the Board of Education, all Board of Educations in New York State, share their authority with other entities. Board members take oath of office every year to comply with the rules and regulations issued by these other entities. They share authority with entities such as the United States Department of Education, the Governor of New York State, the New York State Legislature, the Board of Regents, the Commissioner of Education, and the New York State Controller, just to name just a few of them. Since board members are laypeople and community members, they come to the Board with varied backgrounds and experiences. Rarely does that exclude any particular board member from fulfilling their duties and serving as a board member. There are parameters for conflicts of interest that board members must avoid, and those are addressed in the general municipal law, and boards are provided with tools on how to avoid and address them to allow them to fulfill their duties. As I referenced, a Board of Education meeting is where the Board fulfills its statutory obligation of policymaking and oversight. There's no statutory obligation to have public comment at school board meetings. Nonetheless, many boards choose to include public comment as part of their agenda. This is an opportunity for the Board and the administration to hear feedback on matters that are important to district students, district administrators, and the community at large. This is a time for the Board of Education to listen, and the Board typically will not make comments in response or engage in dialogue during public comments. This is a listening portion of a meeting. Often happens is that those matters that are raised as part of public comment by the community will be referred to the appropriate district administrators, who are more appropriate to follow up with the questions and concerns that are raised. To ensure the orderly operation of a board meeting, the Board requires its speakers to sign up in advance, may limit the time for public comment, and to allow for each speaker. This is required so the Board can get through the agenda and the business items that it has set forth every month. Publix recommended that this is the only, that it's not the only way that the public can share their concerns with the Board of Education. The Board, any member of the public can also submit any concerns in writing to the Board of Education if they do not have an opportunity to participate in the public comment. This is a unique platform that works only when the community, the Board, and the administration work together to make good citizenship, to model good citizenship for our students. Again, I want to thank all of you for embarking on this really important role in the most challenging of years coming up.
We do have changes to our visitor speaking time policy, which we will address later in an effort to get through the agenda because, as Colleen mentions, it is our only opportunity to conduct the business of the district. Typically, this is a very business-forward meeting that's held in August because we set the tax rate. So Brian Freeman has a lot to contribute this evening. So with that, thank you, Colleen, and we'll move on. Instructional reports. Interim Superintendent Brian Neenan will give us his report.
Thank you, Tammy. And good evening, everyone. This past Friday, I'm going to be speaking tonight about our opening plan. So this past Friday, parents received an email from me that we are excited to open on Wednesday, September 8th, and bring back all of our kids full-time, in person. And those are our goals, right there. Those are the three goals that we had at the beginning of the year, excuse me, at the end of last year and throughout this summer. And the number-one goal that we all had going into last year, really, you know, there were certain things that we couldn't because of certain situations, but we wanted to be open five days. And this year, we are happy to say we are going to be open five days in person. And we, the second part of that goal is to stay open five days in person throughout the year. We want to open safely and as much normalcy as possible. So in order to do that, we did get some community feedback from our school community through our thought exchange, and thank you to all of those of you that took time in the effort to participate in that thought exchange. The overwhelming feedbacks from families and anecdotally, what we have heard was, again, do whatever possible to open and stay open five days a week in-person hybrid was way too much of a challenge for all of us involved. So we will continue to use that platform and engage those of our community using thought exchange in the future, as there were many positive takeaways for us and as a system. We also, I'm sending out weekly emails throughout the month of August and until we open with any updates. We've had one, and we will have another, meeting with our opening committee, which is comprised of the stakeholders that you can see listed there, our bargaining room presidents, central PTSA leaders, principals, operations, safety and security, our Board of Ed officers, and our senior staff. And again, great feedback from those individuals that are serving on that and are helping us to open five days safely. We will be sending out a bus survey this week to help us in planning for our arrival and our dismissal. We appreciate, we will appreciate all of our families taking that survey and answering whatever it is that their decision is as a family for transportation. Again, keeping students and staff in school, I cannot reiterate this enough, because as the result of meetings, discussions, and guidance, we will have universal indoor masking this year when we begin school. Again, we want to make sure that we want to stay in school all year, every day. And here's what we know from our Monroe County Department of Health and from other medical experts that we've gained guidance from, that students and staff may be quarantined for up to 10 days when they're exposed to COVID-19. An exposure occurs when a person comes into contact with someone for longer than 15 minutes over the course of a day, closer than six feet, with one or more person unmasked. And in order for us to avoid masked quarantine situations, again, we are going to be doing universal masking for students and staff as we begin this school year. Certainly, this will help us to meet our goals, to have a normal and open, as normal of an opening as possible, so that we can have things like clubs and extracurriculars and athletics. Speaking of which, additional guidance will be forthcoming. And so let me, right now, make sure that I address high-risk sports that we've all seen now, I'm sure, in the media, and say that we are working to put in place the mitigation strategies that will allow our student athletes to play this year like they did last year. More guidance will be forthcoming, for sure, but we believe that we can do what it takes to make sure that we can open school with those things in place, again, with the mitigation strategies that we have, not just masking, but, you know, great hygiene and teaching hygiene to our younger students and whatnot as well. As we progress throughout the year, we want to make sure that everyone understands that we will continue to work with our county to identify those metrics that will be required to update those levels and those layers of mitigation. So we will, we want that, just like many I know of our families that have expressed interest to us, but at this time, given the conditions that we are up against, and the number-one thing being open five days, this is what we have to do, and we are with our county counterparts doing the same thing. If you have, oh, you know what, here's a couple of, here's a slide that I actually, I love this slide. It takes a little bit of a walk back in history. September 2020, and this is what we're anticipating for September 2021. And you can see the crosswalk. Last year, we had to open in hybrid and remote for students and for staff. This year, we want to be full-time, five days, in-person for students and staff. The sports, if you remember, didn't even begin for JV and varsity, those sports that are listed only until September 28th. This year, we want to start our modified, our JV and our varsity for all of our sports, and actually, they're set to begin for JV and varsity anyways, next Monday. All other sports and extracurricular activities were modified, seasons were shortened, et cetera, et cetera. You all know that, you all live that, but this year, again, we wanted to have a normal run with all of our activities. The thing that is common from last year and for this year is the last one, and that is the universal masking for students and staff. If you have questions, oh, here we go, yeah. If you have questions for us on our opening plan, please submit them. I know many already have. When I sent that letter out last Friday, we got tons of questions, which is fantastic, and what we'll do is we'll take those questions and we will put together not only an FAQ document in written form that will be posted on our website, we are also planning on doing a video, and we will post that video on Monday, August 23rd at 6:00 PM for everyone to see the video answering those questions as well. And lastly, I want to say how grateful I am to our entire school community for giving us the feedback and for making sure that we all have, like Colleen actually articulated in the beginning, the number-one thing is about kids. And we want kids here, and we want kids in our classrooms in Webster so that we can teach those kids five days a week and in-person. And with that, I thank you all, and that ends my report for tonight.
Thank you, Brian. Now, moving on in the instructional reports, in the future, this will be an opportunity for any variety of topics that we talk about, that we want to get into a little bit deeper. Tonight, we're going to talk about the culturally responsive framework, and we have Colleen Armstrong, Lucy Kemphi, and Teri McCarthy here to talk to us in their role about the culturally responsive framework.
And I'm actually, I'm actually going to start, so, thank you, Paul. I'm actually going to just start just for a second.
Okay.
And Colleen is right down at the end. Colleen has a broken foot, so she's healing, and she can't get back up here with them, but she's right down there, and she'll present from down there, so thank you, Colleen, for doing that. And we have Lucy and Teri with us here tonight. One of the things that we've heard from our community and certainly from certain members of our staff and whatnot is to make sure that we let our public know what it is that we do in our classrooms. And that is going to be a goal of ours. It is a goal of ours this year to make sure that parents know what it is that we do in our classrooms with our kids. Our number-one thing that we want for kids is to feel welcomed. We want every kid, every single kid that walks through the doors, no matter what their backgrounds are, no matter what their family status is, and no matter what their ethnicity is, religion, choices that their families make, we want them all to feel welcome. And so tonight, we are going to, we're going to take our first step in that journey. This is just the first step. We will also have other opportunities for engaging in the work that we do around culturally responsive sustaining framework. But it's all about educational equity, and you're going to hear more from these great experts who have been doing a lot of work around this and working with our teachers and certainly working and leading some of the work with our kids as well. We've done a great deal of professional development this year that I'm very excited about, and I really ask you all, please, to be respectful and give your attention to Teri McCarthy, Lucy Kemphi, and to Colleen Armstrong. And Colleen, I think that you start?
Yeah.
So I'm going to turn things over to you. So thanks, Colleen.
Okay. Thank you, Brian, and we appreciate that. For those of you who don't know us, I'm Colleen Armstrong, the Executive Director of Student Services. Lucy Kemphi is an Assistant Principal at State Road, and Teri McCarthy is our Director of Humanities. I'm going to click to our next slide. Tonight's journey, we're, you know, as Brian said, we're going to give you a little overview. We'll really talk about how we anchor our work, a little bit about equality and equity, and then we're going to give you an overview of the four pillars of the New York State culturally responsive sustaining framework, so we have a better understanding of the work that is happening in the district. And I'm going to turn it over to Teri.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Colleen. And it's important that we start with this picture, and I think Ms. Heinrich's presentation earlier, Mr. Neenan's remarks as well, is what is this work about? And it's about those faces. And so for us, it's about how do we make sure that those faces are part of what one Webster really is? And so what does one Webster mean? First and foremost, one Webster means that every child sees themselves as part of the school community, that they can see themselves as part of the one, every child. Second, is that every child can be their own authentic self. They can carry themselves into the school building, be confident and comfortable with who they are. It's not for us to pass judgment, it's for us to accept and to welcome and to say, "You are part of Webster, and you are special." And then the third is that all 9,000 students, 1,000 educators, and by educators I mean our teachers, our administrators, our bus drivers, our clerical staff, our cleaners, and I'm leaving out others, and I apologize, anybody who's employed by Webster, all 10,000 of us between students and staff, we are dedicated to living the ideals of joyfully, compassionately connected, joyfully engaged, and always learning. And so for us, as we build our systems and structures and our learning experiences, it's really important that we build them around three key ideas, and we'll hear them woven throughout, but it's important that we talk about learning as mirrors, windows, and doors. And we want every child to have a mirror, that is, to be able to see him or her or theirselves in the curriculum, in the literature, in the books, in the science, in the mathematics, and in the art. You need to see yourself. Secondly, we want every child to have a window to see other worlds, to see how other people live, to see other languages and other cultures and the richness that is this tapestry of what this world is. And then third, we believe it's important that we create open doors. We have to link between the mirror, ourselves, and others, those who are different than us, those who are the same than us, bringing together through our learning and through our experiences to, in fact, become one Webster.
So as we think about anchoring our work, we really turn to the standards and look how the culturally responsive sustaining education framework fits in. So we have academic standards from New York State that our teachers use to design instruction across all subject areas. We also have New York State standards for social-emotional learning, or SEL, that we are responsible for, and they're based on the SEL competencies you see on the wheel in the slide. Webster also used those competencies as the basis for developing the essential skills that you are all familiar with. I want to take a moment to read part of the definition of SEL, and I'd like you to keep this in mind throughout the presentation. "SEL is the process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, and achieve personal and collective goals; to feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible and caring decisions. All of these things are the so-called soft skills that help us work and play together, no matter our age. The culturally responsive sustaining education framework helps us tie together our academic and SEL standards along with our Webster essential skills to empower all our students and create safe, healthy, and just communities. As you'll see tonight, these three anchors allow all students equitable access to learning and allow them to feel safe and successful. They feel heard, that their ideas, interests, and experiences matter, and that they are a valued member of our community." Now I'll turn it over to Lucy to dig in a little deeper.
Thank you. I'd like you to take just a minute and look at this slide. So just to clarify the definitions between equity and equality, because sometimes these are used interchangeably. So equity involves trying to understand and keep and give people what they need to enjoy full, healthy lives. Equality in contrast aims to ensure that everyone gets the same things in order to ensure full, healthy life. Like equity, equality aims to promote fairness and justice, but it can only work if everyone starts from the same place and needs the same thing. So our goal is to give all of our kids in Webster what they need to be successful, and so that they can see success and have a healthy, joyful life. And a friend of mine, to make this a little more concrete, shared with me this really simple thing. Equality, everyone gets a pair of shoes. Equity, everyone gets a pair of shoes that fits. So we're going to share an overview of the culturally responsive sustaining education framework. So this framework was developed with the intention to create student-centered learning, which I think you've heard already, environment that kids can see themselves, to foster positive academic outcomes, develop students' abilities to connect with others that might have different perspectives and different experiences, elevate voices, empower our students to be leaders and agents of change, and to contribute individual student engagement, learning, and growth, and to develop, probably most importantly, critical thinking skills. So this framework is grounded in four principles: a welcoming and affirming environment, high expectations and rigorous instruction, inclusive curriculum and assessment, and ongoing professional learning. And as we go through these four, oh, sorry. What's a culturally responsive sustaining education? I think probably the most important piece is that we're creating a safe and welcoming environment for our students, and that we, not, and all of us that work in Webster, that we're going to not only get to know our kids, but to get to know their families and the community, focusing on who we're teaching each year in front of us, because our students change each year, and as we've constantly said already about maintaining those strong classroom cultures where everybody feels welcome and safe. And as we go through the four principles, I'm going to share the key components of that principle. Colleen's going to connect it with our essential skills within, from Webster, and Teri's going to give a few examples of the many things that are already happening in the district. So our first one about welcoming, affirming environment, I think you've heard this quite a bit already, we want it to be safe and welcoming for our kids. We want our students to see themselves in the classroom through books they're reading, what's on the walls. We've already stated this about learning about not only themselves, but each other, continuing to build those relationships. We have social-emotional learning programs, which Colleen touched on for a minute, and again, materials that we're using that represent all of our kids.
And so we could probably find all seven of our essential skills connect to each of these four pillars, but we're going to call out a few for each one. So for welcoming and affirming environment, you know, think collaboration, communication, and integrity. And when you read those definitions, it's about working together for the benefit of all, understanding what's important to others, and how to share what's important to me, and then that integrity, keeping my words and actions connected to the best that I have to offer.
And so some examples are pretty apparent, and if you have the chance to go to Clem North, if you haven't yet, I would encourage you to walk up that front entrance. And the PTSA at Clem North, along with staff and students, work together to create truly a welcoming and inviting and affirming environment. And Clem North, if you're not familiar, has a large number of students who are English-language learners, and the school community felt it was important that every child, when they came up the walkway, they were going to be welcomed in a language that they could understand. And it's just a great example of people coming together and saying, "This is what it's about." And I'll just give you a couple stats. Currently, well, it's hard to know because our enrollment changes by day, but currently we have over 20, we have students who represent over 20 different nations and whose families, either at home or through heritage or through their, through experience, speak almost 40 different languages. We are a diverse community, and it's important that we welcome and share that diversity. And here's just a quick, quick, quick video clip of walking up that, oh, Paul, here we go, okay. So we will, we will skip that video, and I will move on to the wonders of technology.
Okay. And the second principle of this framework is high expectations, and these are academic rigor for our kids, their challenge intellectually. Again, I'm going to say it again, working with our students to be critical thinkers, to be able to look at different perspectives and learn from difference, to have a positive self-image, to empower themselves and others, for our students to take leadership roles and be agents of change, and to experience project-based learning.
And so when you think about those elements, you want to, you definitely think about collaboration and communication again, but we also wanted to call out self-management and time management. Students need to be able to know themselves and all the different things that they can do to be at their best, and they also need to know how to balance, you know, work and play, and be able to think critically and work together to create those project-based learnings, experiences, and to show leadership. learnings, experiences, and to show leadership within their school community.
And as we think about high expectations and rigorous instruction, a couple of things I think that are really important is the work that our enrichment specialists have done, and we're super excited that our enrichment and instructional specialists were expanding that work, and the development of what we're calling low-floor, high-ceiling mathematical problems, that allows every child to see themselves in math, and every child can participate. And the beautiful thing about this is every child can find a way to solve it in a way maybe that's going to be totally different. And so when we talk about high expectations, this is not, we're going to pull out a couple of kids, this is every kid, seeing themselves in complex mathematical thinking and complex mathematical problem solving. I think about our Model UN at Schrader for our 10th graders. Every child participates in Model UN, and if you've seen 10th graders, like, the minute before, they are, they are anxious, and, but man, oh, man, every kid rises to the occasion, talks about a modern issue, speaking from the perspective of another nation. And that's high expectation. It's every child, no matter what, and every child participates, and it's a beautiful thing to see. And the only thing that's almost as beautiful is in the afternoon, when you see the kids just celebrating their incredible achievement. That's high expectations for all.
And for our inclusive curriculum, again, we're talking about our, working with our students to be leaders and agents of change, learning about different experiences and perspectives, engaging in current events, and also helping to design their learning, that our resources that we're using, that our kids can see themselves in those resources. And as always, as we said from the beginning with the equity piece, that the kids are going to get what they need to be successful. So we're going to differentiate our learning so that they can get where they need to be.
And when we think about that, you know, resilience and perseverance, those essential skills start to come into play. You know, thinking about being a co-designer, I'm going to have to learn to go, grow stronger through that challenge. Perseverance, I'm going to have to stick to it because it's worth it, even when it's tough. And so modeling that with our students together helps build those essential skills for them.
And when we think about inclusive curriculum and assessment, we wanted to highlight a number of the texts that our students read. So you have the Waiting for Biblioburo, which is an exploration that our third-grade students read as part of a unit around literacy across the world, and explores the role that librarians play, particularly in remote villages in the mountainous regions of South and Central America. Our students, many of our students in seventh grade read A Long Walk to Water, which highlights the challenges in the Sudan, and it has a local connection. Actually, the author is, I believe, a Rochester resident. And the, our students were so moved by this that a couple of years ago, they raised almost $3,000 selling water bottles, that they donated entirely to this walk, this Water for South Sudan charity group. And then The Immortal Life of Henrietta Lacks, which looks at the DNA of an amazing woman who unfortunately, due to a health circumstance, wasn't able to live a long life, but her DNA has, and she has become a modern marvel of science. And then lastly, that picture at the bottom is a picture of our Hispanic Heritage celebration, and if you were there, you'll never forget it. We had, this is 2019, we had over 300 Webster residents, all ages, all colors, all abilities, all religions, together to celebrate our wonderful contributions of our Hispanic population, our Latinx population in Webster. It was an incredible, incredible experience for all family members. That's inclusivity.
And our last principle is professional development. Any of our instructional leader, anybody with, that works in our district knows that teaching and learning is ongoing. We keep adapting the process, and we're constantly reviewing our teaching strategies, because as we said in one of our earlier slides, we're teaching the children that are in front of us each week, each year. And our students change, and what they need is different each year. And back to the equity, we're going to give them what they need to be successful.
And our essential skills aren't just for us to teach our children, they're for us to live and model, and you can see that in professional development. Our teachers collaborate together, they persevere even when it's tough to work through new challenges, and they show integrity. They show their best selves to their, our students, so that they model all seven of our essential skills every day.
And when we think about professional development, we think it's important that as professionals, as educators, every one of us, dedicated to improving our craft, because we believe it's important. Our kids need us to be at our very best every day. And I just want to say, I'm so grateful for our teachers and the work that we engage with, with our association, who represent them very well, and we're so proud to be able to be partners with them, to work with them in this endeavor, because we believe as a community that this is the important work to do, and it's digging in, it's learning, it's pushing on our thinking, it's moving ourselves to say, maybe we can think a little differently. And that's awesome, and that's okay, and that's what we should be doing as professionals every day, day in and day out. So then what does this mean for our students? That's the question, right? That's the million-dollar question that we all, that we all have. First and foremost, we believe that we build, we need to build asset-based self-identities, that as our children see themselves for their strengths and recognize the incredible, incredible contributions that they bring to our school community. And by golly, we are so happy every day, and we're going to be so happy when all of our kids show up on day one, walking through those doors. It's going to be a joyous day for sure. We think it's important, we explore different perspectives. We all move through this world very differently. We all live in this world very differently. It's important we see through those windows into other experiences, that we develop critical thinking, analysis, and evaluation skills, that we ask tough questions of ourselves and each other, and that we engage in meaningful and productive dialogue with others. I think if there's anything that our, that this fine democracy needs more, I can't think of anything more than productive dialogue right now. Unfortunately, our children, when they turn on the television, the role models are not engaging in productive dialogue. We need to be able to provide them with a safe environment to engage. We need to be able to have them the opportunity to express themselves and their thinking, because their thinking is important, and we value that. And lastly, we want to help our kids learn how to think. We're not telling our students what to think, it's about how to think. And I would just say...
We're going to respect, we're going to respect the person that has the floor, please. There is time for everyone to speak later. Please do not interrupt. Please respect who's speaking.
Okay, all right, all right, we hear you, please. We're almost done. We are almost done.
So we believe the beauty of the world lies in the diversity of its people, that Webster is stronger because of our diversity, that we value all of our families, every one of them, and we're so grateful that you're a part of our community and part of our one Webster. And with that, I'll turn it over to the board for questions.
Thank you, Teri.
So we did talk about posting the culturally responsive framework to the website, and I know that's something that's being worked on so that people can go to the district website and learn more. For now, this is, this is the time of the meeting for the board members to ask questions of any of the three presenters. So does anybody have a question or a comment that they'd like to share?
Teri, I just want to, I appreciate the presentation, because there's been so much confusion, and, and there's been so much discussion about what curriculum is being taught, and I feel like it's really important that the conversation is had, and you guys are showing and giving those examples, so I really appreciate it. And, and there is so much beauty in equity and diversity, and what I appreciate about this presentation is that you are focusing on those beautiful things. So, so it is beautiful to talk about all the different diversity that we have, and I really appreciate that. And yet, you're not focusing it, it's not a focus on race, it's a focus on embracing, it's a focus on embracing race. And I, that's, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
We, we really, truly ask you not to interrupt, there will be time to speak later. Your time...
Teri, what does the curriculum look like? I mean, you gave some examples, and I think that spoke for itself to me, but can you, do you have any other examples? Because it looked like they were positive examples of curriculum, it's seeing yourselves in books that you're choosing for yourself, and you do want your children to see that, that's positive. Do you have any other examples of curriculum that, you know, kind of demonstrate the different principles that you talk about, not to put you on the spot?
Yeah, sure. And, and I think there, one of the things that, from what I understand from Mr. Neenan and Mrs. Growski and the board, is there'll be plenty of opportunities from each department. I can only speak with some of the work that I've done. We really think it's important that this is an integrated component, and so I'll speak from the social studies lens. And one of the things that's really important is that the kids see their world today, and so it's about exploring what are current events, of course, always in a way that's developmentally appropriate. The conversations you have with five-year-olds are going to be very different than the conversations you have with 18-year-olds. And so we think it's important that our students, in, in social studies, they explore various perspectives, they recognize that, that there are various stories, and for them, it's to explore about a multitude of diverse resources. I'll give one example, in eighth grade, all of our students had the opportunity to engage in a research project where they, they picked their topic, any topic. They explore both what are the positive arguments and the negative arguments, and then they make recommendations on what that should be. That's civics, and that's action, and that's important, and that's what we're doing here in Webster.
I will say too, for my seventh grade, my student, like, he actually participated in that kind of project, and I thought it was great because I knew it from the comments that came back from his teacher, him and his friends had picked up that topic, and they did that project-based research together, and, and they presented it with their own thoughts, and I loved that, because that critical thinking piece is really important, that they're thinking through what they're, what they're researching with their friends, and they're having that debate even with each other to try to talk about how their, their different views on the subject, I think that's really important.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else? Are we? Well, thank you very much for this report, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Could you just repeat where people can go to find the actual New York State curriculum that's going to be used across the state?
Yeah, so you can find it on the NICE Ed website, it should be linked. What we're going to do is, we will link it off of the district webpage, so that families and, families and community members can access that document.
And so what we're hearing also is that there may be more questions, so we can certainly do that, this is an instructional report, it's a time for us to open the door to the conversation. We definitely appreciate that people are here and listening, and we look forward to the opportunity to do that. Okay, so with that, I'd like to thank you for sharing your evening with us, we appreciate your time. Colleen, Lucy, and Teri, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much. And I will just add that there will be more opportunities, and I know one of the things that I, many of you are asking, when we, when you get in and engage with your students' teach, or your children's teachers, there will be many opportunities to have conversations about what it is that our teachers are doing in the classroom. So that will come, please, and I just ask for your patience in that regard, and we will continue to educate and have great dialogue with you, and we plan on more opportunities down the road outside of just board meetings. So, thank you.
So thank you. Moving on to board business. We have a presentation for the final reserve transfers that Brian is going to speak to for a couple minutes for us.
Sure, and I could just keep running through since I have about 12 end-of-the-year things to take care of. First up is required part of our yearly audit is really three actions that the board will take. One is kind of ending the 2021 fiscal year with reserve transfers. We do this in conjunction with our auditors and what they deem our appropriate amounts and where we send them. And then two is a return of any unused reserves that we didn't use last fiscal year to their home bank account. And then third, the final, is a transfer for this current fiscal year. This is required as part of our audit process. Any questions on that?
Any questions, please? This requires our action. So can we have a motion, please, to accept the reserve transfers as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Linda, second.
Second.
Jen, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to the tax presentation.
So what I've tried to do is for the tax warrant is break down the calculation of what goes into it for everybody. So there's really three parts to the formula. There's the equalization rates, which the state sets for all four towns, Walworth, Ontario, Webster, and Penfield that make up the district, the tax levy, which the district sets, and then the assessments, which come from the town. So it's just a quick reminder of the three parts that go into the formula for you. First up is the tax levy, what is the amount we're proposing? You will notice it is different this evening than what was budgeted. This is required to reduce based on the tax cap law by the re-levy amount. So with a district of our size and so many properties, many properties get bought and sold during the whole process of tax bill, so there is amount that goes uncollected, so those get re-leveyed the following year. We reduce our levy by that amount, so for this year, we've reduced it by that amount, which the county gives us. Next up is the assessments, the part of the formula where the valuations of the town come into play. You could see Ontario and Walworth went up drastically, I'll explain that in a moment with the next slide, but yet, there are also small parts of the overall district, and then you see about 1% for Webster and Penfield overall, with assessment growth at about And then the third part is the equalization rates. So you notice why the assessments went up significantly in Ontario and Walworth, that's because they had a townwide revales, they went back to 100% equalization rate. That's a big deal when that happens. You see Penfield and Webster reduced by 2% from last year, they went from 87 to 85, 74 to 72. So that's the third part, and what it gives us is our rates, and so generally, when, I'll point out Ontario and Walworth, generally when a couple of the towns go to 100%, they will see a significant decrease in their tax rate, as you see here. The towns that don't, you see, they go up just about by what the equalization rate changes, that goes into the formula in this case. So you see some wide differences, a lot of that has to do with the town-specific information that goes into the formula. So just to kind of compare where the April projections, when we do a budget of how accurate we are, so really what, what happened and how useful those projections could be, you know, the tentative equalization rates from April held true, so that was helpful in trying to predict as accurately as possible. The assessments were a little different, so that brought the rates a little higher in actuality, and the assessment amounts for Ontario and Walworth were, you know, way higher than what we predicted in April. So, but still fairly confident that we're, we're close to the ballpark with our projections come budget time. So one of the questions we get asked every single year, this was very popular, because our equalization rate in Webster has dropped, and it's a bulk of the school community when you're talking about this, what would happen? So Webster would actually see a significant drop in the tax rate. Penfield, Ontario, and Walworth would see a jump up, and that all has to do with the size of Webster in comparison to the other three towns. So one way you could look at it is the equalization rate for Webster, currently subsidized lower tax rates for... So, uh, one way you could look at it is the equalization rate for Webster currently subsidize lower tax rates for the other three towns. So why are they not all the same at 100%? Uh, we are unique, uh, Webster and Penfield are one of the only two districts that have to do a different calculation. Because we straddle two counties and have multiple towns, we also get sales tax. So sales tax has to be allocated as part of the formula to each town. So, when you have wide disparities between, uh, the Wayne County properties and Monroe County properties, you'll, they'll never be 100% the same tax rate like you would with a, uh, school district that has all their towns in one county. I just wanted to touch a little bit on STAR, because that, uh, if you've recently moved, bought a home, or have been convinced, you see the state is, in essence, whittling away STAR. You see the basic STAR rate has gone down for all four of our towns. And so for Penfield, you know, it's gone down, Webster it's gone down, but the enhanced has stayed the same year-to-year. Just want to point that out, um, the state has made, uh, significant changes with that STAR program, uh, that have an impact on tax collection. So, average home, this is the best, um, estimate we could come up with, based on some real estate data that's out there. Um, you know, it changes, seems like it changes every day, um, with new home sales and prices going through the roof of what, uh, it, on average, what we, an estimated, uh, cost for a home would be. Questions on that? Now, accompanying this is just kind of a, a summation memo for you guys, and the actual warrant calculation that goes number by number for you. Uh, I've tried to distill it into something, um, that is a little bit more manageable and approachable when it comes to the, the calculation.
Brian, we've had time to read through this and really kind of ask our questions. What should the community do if they don't understand what they're seeing and they want to ask more questions?
Email me.
Okay.
You know, I'd probably wait until your, the bills, right now it's kind of like that, you know, dead spot in time. Uh, because what we'll do after tonight is I have to email to the state, the county, give them a bunch of data. And really, STAR is such a holdup now, uh, whereas, you know, 10 years ago, we could calculate STAR and, you know, I could tell you specifically, but now STAR is calculated at the state level. So I send them some information, then they send us STAR back. So it's, it won't be accurate for a little bit.
Just because I know some of the definitions and the rates.
Yep, we also, right.
Feel free to ask.
It's a great question, um, I actually define a bunch of the key terms right on the business department website under, uh, taxes. There's a, there's a little summation there.
Any other questions? So the next document that is the tax warrant, the presentation?
Yep, that, we could, you lumped that all together, because I
Yep.
just went over the salient points.
Okay. Um, can we have a motion, please, to accept the taxed warrant as presented?
So moved.
Thanks, Jen, second?
Second.
Janice, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to the treasures report.
So yep, we have two months of treasures reports there with executive summaries for May and June. Uh, just want to point out one thing, you know, June, uh, typically it's the end of the fiscal year, June 30th. Uh, so, not, but not everything, and how we wrap up our month-end will equate directly to when you see an audit come through, uh, next month in the audit report, because they'll take, uh, the year in totality. So, the treasures reports are, you know, a, a month-to-month, whereas, so when we say end June 30th, you can't match the June 30th treasures report to our audit, because it's a collective of the year. Just wanted to point that out to everybody.
Any questions regarding the treasures reports for May and June? So do them.
Brian? You, you said we were in a better cash position this year than last year. Is that due to COVID, is it due to?
It's due, uh, to, two things. One is we completed the capital project for, um, 2016, so we permanently did financing. So how we've been using reserve balances to pay for the ongoing expenses. So we borrow one time, so we only have the fees associated with borrowing one time versus multiple little borrowings. So now that we have that borrowing and that all set, our cash position is much better, rather than dwindling our reserves to pay for the bills as we're going.
Great, thank you.
Okay, then can we have a motion, please, to accept the treasures reports for May and June? Linda, second, by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to the emergency project approval memo and resolution.
Yep, so, uh, we have an emergency project for approval. Um, and what this is, is, you know, our original elevator here at Spry, um, it's, it's old, I think is the best way to describe it. Uh, anybody that's ever ridden in it knows it's, it takes a little bit to go from floor one to floor three. Uh, but we've recently, um, you know, as part of our building condition survey, uh, it's on its last leg. It's still working, you know, fingers crossed. Uh, we have a second elevator over here, which is helpful. But, um, in a way to kind of maximize our state aid, uh, we're going to declare this as an emergency, because it could go at any time, and our elevator, uh, company, Schindler, has told us parts would be, um, not impossible, but practically impossible to get if something does go. So we're going to just take it offline, uh, once we get approval. We have gotten a handshake email approval from the state education department, they're just waiting for formal board approval on this. And then we'll get our building permit and find a time to, uh, replace the system.
Okay, so in the meantime, we're going to take the stairs. Any questions about this emergency project?
Tammy, because it is a emergency project, we do need a roll call.
Cindy will do a roll call vote.
We need a motion in a second.
Can we have a motion, please, to accept the emergency project approval memo?
So moved.
Jen, second? Linda, all in favor?
All in.
Cindy will
Mike?
Call everyone.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Shanna?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Tammy?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian. Moving on to the intermunicipal agreement for the school resource officers, we we're awaiting their contract and now have that in hand.
Yep, we were, uh,
Speak to that.
able to cross the Ts, dot the Is with the town of Webster for our intermunicipal, with, uh, our resource officers. But I just want to take a, a moment to thank, uh, Officer Gamina and Officer Hurley, um, who have been great, um, for us. I believe, I, I can share that, uh, we're sad and happy at the same time that Officer Gamina is leaving us to go back full-time to Webster Police Department. But a familiar face is coming back, Officer Johnson is returning to us, uh, starting in September. So I know, uh, Officer Hurley was quite sad when he left him, but he has grown quite fond of, uh, Officer Gamina, but he's happy to get his old partner, Officer Johnson, back. So we're excited to, to welcome Officer Johnson back to the team.
I know I speak for all of us when we talk about, when we've been at graduations for the past few years, and students shake the hands and hug the school resource officers as much as they do their vice presidents or the superintendent. And they have made a tremendous difference in our community, and we're grateful for their support. So, thank you for that, Brian. So can we have a motion, please, to accept the intermunicipal agreement for the school resource officers?
So moved.
Linda, second?
Second.
Jen, sorry, just, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to the appointment of the internal auditor.
Yep, so, uh, right in mid-July, our internal auditor, Hungerford and Vinton, uh, Tim Hungerford, who is the principal in that firm, uh, reached out to, to us and let us know that he was taking a step back and, uh, no longer performing internal audit work for school districts. So he notified, uh, the three districts in the county he was doing that service for. Um, he is actually moving on, uh, to take over a local towns as their finance director. So, uh, what we had to do is just re-engage, uh, a couple, we went through a process two years ago. So we re-engaged, uh, the group that finished second in the process, checked their references, brought them in and interviewed them. And, uh, feel very confident that the Bonadillo Group will do an excellent job as our internal audit for, uh, the district going forward, and we're excited to have them on board. And, uh, you know, if it was just a couple weeks sooner, we could have done this at the reorg meeting. Unfortunately, uh, Mr. Hungerford hemmed and hawed with the decision until after that date. So, uh, excited to get the Bonadillo Group involved with the district going forward.
Okay, thank you for your work in, in coordinating their referral. Can we have a motion, please, to accept the appointment of the internal auditor? By Mike, second, Janice, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to the updated audit report for extra classroom activity funds and corrective action plan, thank you.
Yep, um, what you have here is actually, uh, from last year, um, so we have submitted these, the board approved them last fall and last January, um, respectively. But what ended up happening in June is SED and the comptroller kicked back our submittals. Um, after six months, they were just, uh, going through audit reports and kicked back to most of the Monroe County districts, I know we're not alone, um, and said, "Your corrective action plans need to be updated with a timeframe." So what you have before you is, uh, literally one sentence added, that it will be completed in one year. That's what they would deem appropriate, uh, after a back-and-forth with them. So we had to update those corrective action plans from last year with that line, get board approval, and then I'll have to resubmit them to the comptroller and SED, um, in the coming days. Nothing else has changed, but it's just a procedural, uh, update for the, for the state.
And can we update both audit report recommendations?
Yep, that's it, it's the identical language for both of them.
Perfect, okay. Can we have a motion, please, to, to accept the updated audit report, classroom activity corrective plan?
So moved.
Thank you, Jen, a second? Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to the code of conduct, um, this is reviewed annually, and we have Colleen Armstrong to walk us through the presentation.
So, um, last January, we brought you an updated code of conduct, and the code of conduct that we have here today doesn't have any changes from, um, January. Um, in that revision, we really tried to make it a more user-friendly, um, more readable and understandable for students, staff, and families. Um, we incorporated both our essential skills and our care expectations throughout the document, as well as, um, as we've, uh, gone down the road of restorative practices, starting to build that language, um, within the document. So, we haven't made any changes for this year for the approval, but our goal is then to be able to take this out to all our different stakeholder groups and gather feedback, so that when we come back in next August, we may have some more updates for you, but that's where we are at this point.
Okay, any questions from anyone on the code of conduct review? Okay, seeing none, can we accept the code of conduct, please?
Make a motion?
Motion, Shanna, second? Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. District goals. We, um, have worked, we've met in a retreat setting a couple times to talk about our district goals and what we want to do to improve or clarify or explain, and there are small adjustments that we've made. Nothing very substantial, because they do still reflect the collective work that we do. Um, the academic program is goal one. Goal two is school climate and culture. Goal three is operations and financial planning. So, there is a spot on the website where you can see all of the Board of Education's work. You can see explanations for anything, and you are always welcome to reach out. But what we do is we incorporate a strategic planning process where we have goals that, and we have also specific targeted goals. So we revisit each year, so that we make sure that our goals for the following year are going to accomplish the things that we want to accomplish. So, it is a process that we continually re-evaluate and adapt our work accordingly. So with that, everyone has been able to be part of that conversation. Um, can we have a motion, please, to accept our district goals? Jen, in a second? Janice, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to our visitor speaking time policy revision. Um, we took elements that were shared across the county. Board clerks across the county attend a couple conferences where they look at different policies and adapt to their communities. So overall, they're very similar, there are elements that are very similar. Um, the biggest change we made to our policy this year was to move visitor speaking time to the end of the meeting, hoping we could accommodate more speakers. We also, um, adjusted the time to register to speak ahead. So a committee of myself, Jen Birdsong, and Shanna Adalfa met offline, talked about what we wanted to see happen, developed the speaking policy, developed a trifold brochure that you're all welcome to. And we developed a form, a Google form, when you register, that will ask a few questions and allow us to better monitor who signs up. We do want to hear from all members of the community. And, um, Jen and Shanna, I, if you'd like to say a couple words about our work in this?
One thing that, that Shannon and I really got from the community was that there isn't a specific way to get feedback. So when you reach out to the district, um, it's not clear what kind of response you want. So we made sure that when you sign up to speak, it's very clearly, what do you want back from the district? So that whatever the issue is, do you want a phone call, do you want an email, do you want an in-person meeting? Right here on this form, whatever follow-up you want, you can request right on the spot. That way we have data showing that the communication happened, and that we can more easily follow through to make sure no one is missed. That's the hope with this, this feedback form.
Thank you, Jen. Shanna?
So, and the intent with the trifold was because as a new parent, I know when I started coming to board meetings, I didn't really understand what the process was. I didn't understand some of the rules and, and the protocols. So we wanted something that, as you're coming in here and being new to this, that you could pick up and kind of understand what, how this works, and what's the point of workshops, and, and different things like that. So we wanted to make sure that, A, you under, you know that when you reach out, you're going to get a response back. You can put that information on the form. The board, it made the policy less restrictive, where you can sign up the day of, there's more time to speak. Um, and we want to make sure that that communication is happening with the community, and, and the board was, uh, to me, it was, they were so positive about creating that. Um, so I was very happy to see the changes, you know, that we're able to bring together as a board for the community.
So with that, with these three different elements that we've now implemented to try to improve communication, understanding, and then, as Jen mentioned, the follow-up piece is really important. So that conversations don't end, perhaps it's a beginning. Um, with that, can we have a motion, please, to accept the revised visitor speaking time policy?
So moved.
Thank you, Jen, in a second? Would that be Shanna? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Next, we have a policy update, and that was an add to the agenda, because we don't have a policy committee, um, update scheduled for this evening. But our policy committee this year will consist of Janice Richardson and Linda DiAgardi, with the help perhaps of, um, administration teams for sure, Maria Rijillo, and, uh, BOCs, and there are other organizations that help districts, so that your policies are always up to date with the things that need to be part of it. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to both of you.
So we have our first reading of policy 5160, which is an update to COVID-19 health and safety requirements. We anticipate changes and updates as our lieutenant governor takes over in a week or so. So this is just a first reading, everyone has had time to review it. Are there any questions, comments, suggestions?
Did I say Colleen recommended?
Okay. Um, so just to clarify, this is a fluid document, correct? So as masking can be removed, we will change this, and if necessary, it can come back if necessary, correct? So it's constantly going to be
constantly going to be updated based on the needs and the numbers and the data.
Correct.
Correct. So, on the recommendation of our district's attorney, we adopted this policy, as many other school districts will, across the county, across the state, and across the country. What we do expect is the new governor, Kathy Hochul, once she begins her administration, will probably take action as well. However, however, we know that as situations change, which they have, you know, we're a year and a half into this pandemic, that we will be able to adapt as we, as we need to, once we have that guidance. So, this policy is a first read to say what we believe we will be required to do.
You were right. The Biden administration.
So, we...
Do you need action?
Pardon?
Why can't we do that?
What is the policy if younger children show up and they are not wearing masks? Because I spoke to the sheriff's department, and he said there's no policy in place at the sheriff's department. Right now, they can't do anything. And children, 100 kids, 200 kids have to wait for school. They don't get out of there. There's nothing.
So, sure. So, we know that this is unfolding on a daily basis. We know that we want a full reopening of school on September 8th with all kids in class every day, all week. Staff needs to feel safe.
We do have to ask for your permission.
Okay. So, all right. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to move on the agenda. This was a first read, and we need to continue. We will be a visitor speaking time in no time.
We have four groups of the left side.
Moving on. Excuse me. I, we do, we...
We need to get in there for your children.
Excuse me.
We need to productive dialogue and...
We will ask everyone to please be quiet, so that we can continue the meeting. We don't want to have to call a recess. We don't want to have to adjourn.
Tammy, Tammy, where can they read a copy of the policy?
Who's...
Where, where, where can we?
The policy will be on the website. It is newly drafted.
Just like normal. The policy will normally, whenever we do this with any policies, we always put them in the agenda in a minute. You'll be able to find those.
Well, and for, I also want to make sure it's clear that my email last Friday is our current district policy, as far as masking goes. Yep, no problem. I'm sorry that there was any confusion on that. But I did, again, right now, as a superintendent, as the interim superintendent, it is, it is my responsibility to tell you exactly how we are operating as a school district. And as of right now, unless anything else changes, that's what my email was last Friday, that we will be universal masking five days a week with full kids in person. Okay? So, that should clear that up. Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on. We have a resolution on deck. Excuse me. We're moving on, please. We'll get to visitor speaking time. We have a resolution before us. Since April 30th, when Mr. Neenan was appointed deputy superintendent, he also served as assistant superintendent for instruction. During that time, he has worked tirelessly, along with many members of the senior administration team, and we are deeply grateful for all the work that goes into replanning, reopening, getting kids back in school in a safe manner. We are extremely grateful for the work he's done. We are very appreciative of the style, the very collaborative style that Mr. Neenan has brought before us to this date, and are very supportive of his work going forward. So, I have a motion, a resolution before us that I will read to you. Whereas the Board of Education, after careful consideration, has determined that Brian Neenan possesses the experience and necessary qualifications to continue as Webster Central School District's interim superintendent of schools, and whereas Mr. Neenan has agreed to accept the board's offer to continue serving as the interim superintendent of schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the continued appointment of Brian Neenan as interim superintendent of schools upon the terms and conditions of the employment agreement for the interim superintendent of schools and authorizes the board president to execute the same. Therefore, can I have a motion, please, to accept the agreement that we have all had a chance to read?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Linda. Second. Was it Jen? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, Tammy, and thank you, board, and certainly thank you, community. I know I have had many conversations with many of you, and I will continue to have those conversations. And I appreciate your support as I continue in this interim role.
We have a couple items of old business. The New York State School Board Association Annual Meeting Delegate for the virtual meeting that occurs October 18th. I had volunteered to do that because we have three other board members attending in person, along with a couple administrators. So, that is, that is just, well, it does require action. Can we have a motion, please, to accept my appointment as delegate to the meeting? Janice, in a second. By Jen, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. The second reading of the draft Board of Education calendar. We changed our meeting to Tuesday evening. That was more convenient for all involved. We also, we have all our dates. We have a business meeting once a month. We have a workshop once a month, which is our opportunity to learn more about what occurs daily in the classroom. So, it's often teachers and administrators that present to us. The calendar is set. The, there are some items that are longstanding and calendar-driven, and some items that will remain fluid throughout the year. However, we do have a calendar that we can adopt. Can I have a motion, please, to accept the calendar as read? Thank you, Jen. Second. By Janice, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Finally, we have our consent agenda, which includes minutes, personnel actions, recommendations of the special education committee meetings, and determinations, eligibility determination meetings for special ed kids, and recommendations on the preschool special education committee meetings. Can I have a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda? By Jen, second.
Second.
By Janice, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. We now will move on to our visitor speaking time. Cindy Cushman, anyone who is registered to speak, she will introduce you. Please come to the microphone, say your name, share your topic if you wish, and we welcome everyone to speak. First, we have Louis Levine.
We're almost there. It was part of the consent. It's okay.
You can, yeah, you can sit. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Is the green button on?
Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to thank the board for complying with my Freedom of Information request for a copy of last month's agreement to pay out $155,000 to the former superintendent and waiving the $22,000 penalty for not providing sufficient notice of his departure. Apparently, the settlement was necessary because there was legitimate dispute as to the acceptance of the resignation and the circumstances regarding the same. What a joke. That is meaningless, incoherent dribble. Those involved with giving this retirement gift must take the people of Webster to be fools. At last month's board meeting, I pleaded with the board not to hand over a penny of hard-earned taxpayer money to the former superintendent. My words fell on deaf ears. The $155,000 was paid to a person who stepped down in the midst of a lawsuit filed against him for alleged behavior that can only be described as unethical and immoral. Alleged bad actors should not be rewarded for their misdeeds. If the board was truly interested in finding out the truth, it would have called for an independent, thorough investigation to be conducted many months ago. Instead of wasting taxpayer dollars on alleged bad actors, how about taking a bold step to unmask our children when they return to school? The stool districts can make their own policy for safely returning. The CDC and State Education Department's statements are merely guidance. They are not mandates. It's guidance that is not rooted in scientific reality. It's guidance that is harmful to our children's physical and mental health. Instead of falling in line like sheep, be leaders. Lead the way out of this insanity. If you cannot or unwilling to lead, then step out of the way. And maybe, and maybe take some time to understanding that implementing critical race, gender, and religious theory can only cause divisiveness. Don't use our kids as part of this abhorrent progressive experiment. Rather, teach them to be proud Americans, that we are all created equal. Live in a country of incredible opportunities for those who work hard and are judged not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. That is the dream and not the nightmare being forced upon us. Thank you.
And the next speaker, please? Joan Miranda.
Please, it's hard for everybody to hear. Give the courtesy to the speaker, please.
You'll notice I'll be looking more towards all of you attendees, as my message needs to resonate with you. The board will be able to hear my, hear, and my advice to them is respectfully, absorb as much as possible, as I'm not here to waste anyone's time. Okay, can we all agree that when push comes to shove, it's family first, specifically our children?
Yeah.
And historically, we have entrusted those with whom we have elected to our local school boards, along with school administration, and our beloved educators, teachers, and the New York State Education Department, to have policies in place to give haven, teach, and advocate for our most precious. Am I on the right track here?
Yeah.
Okay. If you have ever, if you have ever been bullied or witnessed it, it is unpleasant for sure. If you ignore it, it rarely goes away. In lieu of offering psychological help to a receptive bully, the only other methods are to run away or disable the bully. Personal denial or blaming oneself only serves to tacitly encourage more oppression. When children bully other children under the charge of the schools, the responsibility eventually falls in the lap of the school district. If the district isn't aware of a problem in denial, refuses to candidly report bullying events as required to New York State Education Department, it makes sense that nothing will be done, and the problem continues unchecked. Just so you have an historic reference point, on Sunday, April 6, 2006, the Democrat and Chronicle published a spreadsheet of sorts from data obtained from the New York State Education Department, which categorized bullying events as reported by school districts throughout Monroe County, and other counties also. But this was Monroe County. If I told you that just one, one bullying event in the 100-day school year at Willink Middle School made the report, you, like my wife and I, would be in your right to question Webster Central School District's tensions as they relate. We did, and we're met, our son was bullied, and I can tell you, at Willink, he was bullied eight times a day for months, until he couldn't explain the marks on him. So, anyways, we did, we did and met with excuses, outright denial, and indifference. Why do I bring this up? If you want to know that this lack of transparency is what we are dealing with, okay? Get prepared to have your children experiencing bullying, and when I, and when you intervene, you must expect to be bullied. Parents, grandparents, concerns taxpayers and students, how many of you are aware of the newest threat called Critical Race Theory, or CRT for short? Around since roughly the 1980s, its claims to fight racism is anything but, and has been sent to infiltrate our children's schools. CRT is actually anti-thesis to its claims and is an opportunistic power grab. It insists that the grand solution to an inherently racist society, by the way, which does not exist. In reality, CRT, and any of its subheadings, induce the systematic dismissal of individuality, the judging of individuals by color of skin, and the condemnation of capitalism, and how the heck did this evil incarnate come about? Last summer, skewed, dishonest media coverage, the suppression of facts, the presumptuous attempts to erase history, a full-on endorsement by our hypocritical Democratic leadership of the riots, violence, destruction of real estate, and loss of life further opened the floodgates to the intimidation now known as cancel culture. You watched it happen? You may have experienced it. It continues undebated. It's where anyone with, with an iota of common sense spoke out, commented on, or criticized these happenings and divisive ideology, who then lost their job, became the butt of societal dismissal, and even suffered physical violence. Cancel culture, in combination with the woke, that's staying angry ideology, is a clear and present danger to our First Amendment right to free speech. The fix won't be masks, sorry to, sorry to say. It is designed to undermine the once sacrosanct parental authority and bully the children by welcoming woke, misguided, bigoted, and clearly racist propaganda. If your school district has an equity, diversity, and inclusivity department, that is the first step in recognizing the threat of non-transparency. Failing having our teachers wear body cams or having a direct Zoom-type portal to any, to any in-class session, which I would love to see, and I mentioned it the last meeting, we do it, we do it with the police. We make them put those things on. We want accountability, don't we? And we want to kill accountability because we're, the perception is we're not getting transparency, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I am proposing the following. This is, this is not legal in the school district, so I'm just going to just say it, though, and just throw it out there for whatever it's worth. I am proposing have your children surreptitiously record select classes or deep, or deprogram, or question at the end of each school day, or pull them out and homeschool them, or send them to a school where they would be educated, not indoctrinated, taught how to think, not what to think. Sorry, I don't believe you guys. Be concerned of no written CRT curriculum, and be scared to death of the now voluntary in-service for teachers. I do have a couple moles in the system, where they have been asked to weave equity, diversity, and inclusivity into their lesson plans. These are not forced. They're voluntary, okay? Find out who is coming into the schools to indoctrinate your kids' teachers. Lastly, please, please do not ever lose sight of a glaring fact. There are few of them, and many of us. When you cannot get a damn straight answer, I'm sorry to say that it has evolved into this, but get your neighbors together, and all demand full transparency and nothing less. Thank you.
David Ruiz.
Good evening. Thank you. Here's a post on social media from a friend of mine. Tonight, a teacher somewhere in your neighborhood is getting ready for your child's new school year, writing lesson plans, writing your child's name in their gradebook. Teachers all over the world are using their free time and often investing their own time and money for your child's literacy, prosperity, and future. I responded, "I just wish the teacher would not be weaving in any race-in-your-face stuff or sex ed à la World Health Organization values in their lessons plan." For sure, I got lambasted back. So, I wrote, "Okay, my apologies for being bull in a china shop of positive sentiments. I agree, teachers can be great in so many ways. But the post did mention writing lessons planned, and I express my wish in that regard not to betray their better sentiments towards our open and innocent children. I only add that teachers be lifted up with their lesson planning, specifically for having to navigate through today's cultural and political landscape and demands, demands they may or may not agree with. The current trend in the military is towards more wokeness and gender orientation. It has been widely publicized, even touted by a general, the same general that planned the Afghanistan withdrawal." Some critics rightly now wonder if the military should have stuck to their basic of their functions, of which they are the best in the world, instead of these social issues. Maybe the same could be said here for our schools. Get back to the basics of reading, writing, arithmetic. After all, is there one law that discriminates against who can move into our district? Is there one law that discriminates about... Is there one law that discriminates about who can participate in our schools or in our sports activities? Is there one law that discriminates a student achieving academic excellence here in Webster? Again, a law that discriminates based on race, culture, being handicapped? I don't think so. So why not get back to the basics? Instead of social teacher, or social, uh, social, uh, not engineer, I'm sorry. We hired 11 new counselors, et cetera. Why not hire some teachers or staff that will focus in on just finally beating Penfield in academic achievement or test scores? How will identity politics and profiling students help? I recall a study about the power that a teacher's pupil assessment has on the next-grade teacher. They took mediocre students and passed them on as uniquely gifted, exceptional, special. Sure enough, the new teacher treated the student as such, and the student's scores and abilities dramatically improved. So I'm not sure how profiling or identity intersectionality assessments uplifts the students. I rather think it puts them in a mold, even stigmatizing the student, just as sure as if the teacher classified the student as problematic. I think our country is unparalleled in classifying by race at an increasing rate. I have been told that we're the only country in the world who has Hispanics. Everywhere else, they go by the name of the country they're a citizen of. Why don't we get back to assessing our students by their actual achievements and the content of their character, not their race, gender, religion, or sexual orientation? Are we going backwards?
Thank you. Jennifer Fonseca.
I want to start with everybody in the audience. First, with a show of hands, how many of you pulled your students or your children from the district already? Raise your hand. How many of you are planning on pulling them out? How many of you, if you want information, let me know if you would like to pull your student or your child out and what you can do to protect them? We just heard tonight a plan. A plan that is very disturbing. It was sugar-coated to make it sound like that we're going to be accepting of all cultures, that we are a diverse community. How diverse are we? I see a room full of people of many colors, mm, yeah, different tones, basically white. I see a lot of nice tans out there, good job this summer. And then you talk about over at Clem Road, that you have these pictures going of including everybody by saying hello to them in their own language. Whatever happened of always doing that to anybody that you meet? What about, you know, teaching our kids to say good morning? How about helping a teacher to carry their books? How about being nice to one another? Instead, you're redefining it based on culture, skin tone, ethnic backgrounds? I'm just appalled. Everything that I'm hearing tonight, I'm going to divert for just a minute because I threw it in here. Summer retreat, setting goals, that is for public meetings, not for a retreat. I'm sorry. There were topics in your summer retreat that we had, again, transparency, zero. So let me get back on top, on what I'm going to talk about. The steps to indoctrinating children and citizens, I heard it tonight. Create a fear. Mandate to silence, masks. Create a code of conduct, and yes, I read it, that allows the district to not allow parents or taxpayers, oh, there's another transparency thing. I've been talking transparency to this district since January. I am a taxpayer. How many of you are taxpayers out here? I don't receive anything from this district. I don't receive anything that you've been talking about this evening. And there's many more out there. I didn't even receive the school budget before I voted on it. And if I didn't receive it, I know others didn't receive it. Let me go back. Create a code of conduct that allows the district to not allow parents or taxpayers in the classroom or school based on step number one, a creation of fear. They can close down your schools to parents and to anybody who wants to walk in their school at any time under COVID, okay? Monitor, oh, indoctrinate through the youth through a new way of thinking. Hmm, yes, that's the thought control. Monitor youth through subjective and objective evaluations. I am going to ask this board and the school district to send me the job description of the social workers, seven social workers, and I know you hired five psychologists, in tenured positions. When I asked this question before I even ran for school board, I asked, "What are you going to do with 11 social workers?" My response I received was, "We need them in the schools because the kids have been out of school for so long, there's going to be anxiety issues." That's what I was told. Now I'm hearing, and I saw it up there, social and emotional learning. I pray that social and emotional learning in this district and what is happening around this country is not going to take place here. Around the country, social and emotional learning, they are hiring social workers, psychologists, coaches, teacher coaches, to come in and to take, do subjective and objective evaluations on our kids to see how they are accepting the new CRT, the CSC, the diversity and inclusion. They're doing it through surveys, they're doing it through observations, and if the children aren't adapting well, they're doing it, they're going to have some check-ins with these kids. They could pull these kids to do some counseling with them. Not with our children. I pray, again, I pray, and I pray a lot, I do pray a lot, that this would never take place in our district, that that would be the use and abuse of these positions that are tenured. I was told one year, they're coming in this year as they adapt back to a five-day schedule. Tenure position, tenure positions means three years, they do well, they're permanent. Where are we getting that money? Taxpayers. Let the teachers teach. Another thing I heard this, here, heard this evening, life is not fair. Your job has always been to give them what they need. I was, I was an educator for 35-plus years. You're using this new lingo and you're twisting it around. We have always taught our kids through looking at their zone of proximal development where their needs are, and we teach them. You're trying to tell me tonight, you're not, you have not been teaching our kids. You're using all this mumbo jumbo language, but it's all the same thing, that you're not teaching our kids. You're trying to twist it. Teach these kids reading, write, writing, math. Math. I heard, I heard multiple times, even in the mathematics, diversity and inclusion in the mathematics, that worries me. I wonder now, Louis, we need another foil. Pathway to equitable math. I pray again that that is not what it is. Page seven, right at the beginning of the equitable, if they do bring this program in, a pathway to equitable math instruction, dismantling racism in mathematics instruction. That is the title of the program. I'm asking right now, did this district purchase that program? Okay, page six. White supremacy culture is the idea, ideology that white people and the ideas, thoughts, beliefs, and actions of white people are superior to people of color in their ideas, thoughts, and beliefs. Notes to two of terms. As a visual indicator, we italicize the terms used to identify white supremacies characteristics as defined by Jones and Okun, 2001. They are as follows. Perfectionism, sense of urgency, defensiveness, quantity over quality, worship of the written word, paternalism, either-or thinking, power hoarding, fear of open conflict, individualism, only one right way. What does that have to do with math? I, I, I don't understand. And that's right at the beginning. We want our kids to learn math. We pay our teachers. I saw our budget again. I went through your May and your June, all of your expenditures, et cetera. We want them to be taught, that's all. Teach our kids, teach them correctly. I want you to know, I agree that every black life matters. How many of you agree that every black life matters? I do too. I do too. If you did not raise your hand and you believe that only black lives matters, let me give you a statistic. Black, black population is 13% in our country right now. Out of that 13%, 3.2% of these, this population are of childbearing years. Out of those childbearing years, 40% of black women abort their children. If you are part of Black Lives Matter, that hurts my heart. 40% of the abortions are going towards black children. Now that's where we need to make a correction. We need to be saving children, not opposing and oppressing our kids again by the color of their skins. And please don't ever use the term Latinx with any of our students. My children are Honduran. Other people I know are Puerto Rican, are Costa Rican, Cuban, Cubanos, Cubanas, they are not Latinx. Please, that is racist. I'm asking you tough questions, Sarah. I'm asking that you ask yourself tough questions. What do our children really need? What are we going to do to come back to the middle in this country versus separating us even further away? Your job is to teach. The school board, it's your job to make sure that those teachers are teaching correctly. If you cannot do your job, please step down. I know many people here that will be willing and able to take your place. And always remember, in the end, God wins.
Jennifer Best.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer. We all know that this past year and a half has been very challenging for everyone since coronavirus became part of our daily vocabulary. If I had to name one positive thing that has unfolded over the past 18 months, for me personally, is that it opened up an opportunity to rescue my kids from this corrupt Marxist indoctrination camp that we call the public education system. My kids are now enrolled in a private school where parental choice is respected and honored in regards to medical decisions for our family. They have taken a firm stance on leaving it up to parents to decide if they want their children to wear a mask or not, if they want their child to get an experimental vaccine or not, without segregating or discriminating against those who have chosen differently. They stand up for their families and respect our God-given freedoms, no matter the cost or the backlash from the state or the county, or whoever the finger is being pointed at on that day. We know Dr. Mendoza is threatening our private school to mask up perfectly healthy students. We know he's probably pressuring you too. Based on what? Manipulation of numbers and misleading information about the number of current cases in Monroe County, taken from faulty PCR testing versus the truth about, of the, the truth about the extremely low death rate, especially in children? A true leader will not back down out of fear or because arrows are being pointed at them. You have a chance to represent our one Webster community by honoring all parents' choices as each individual family will weigh the benefits and risks for themselves. I am proud to say that the public school district that I grew up in, North of Buffalo, has announced, just yesterday, I believe, that they will also be leaving these decisions up to the parents. When one person stands up, you start to see more and more do the same. You can take a stand against these fear-driven recommendations of universal masking, vaccine mandates, the faulty testing, and unnecessary quarantining of healthy individuals. So please remember that recommendations and mandates are not the same thing as laws. This can be your golden opportunity to do the right thing and to show true leadership and say, "No, we will not tell anyone what medical decisions are best for them or their children." You can be the leader of the other public schools in Monroe County and put your foot down and say, "We will not force our students to wear masks or coerce them into getting an experimental vaccine," that those personal decisions will be left up to our students' parents to make. Each and every one of you as superintendent and Board of Education members has a responsibility and a duty to represent all of us. Thank you.
Jill Joy.
My name is Jill Joy and I'm a Webster resident, and every time I'm up here, I talk about the mask. And every person who is for it always says that it's just a mask. It's just a mask. Here's your mask. When you say, "It's just a mask," this is what I see. It's just a mask. It's just a mask that you must wear, but don't worry, because we'll tell you when to breathe and what to think and when to smile and what to say. It's okay because we know best, it's just a mask. We'll give a mask break, which means we will let them breathe, and in that moment, your child can take a breath and fill their lungs and smile at a friend, but just as quick the moment will be gone, mask back on, over the nose it goes. Because if it's more than a moment, then they will think they have control, that they have a say to breathe, to think, to speak, and that is not compliance. Parents, we're not after you. Because as cliché as it may sound, the children are our future, so they want to take control of them now. It's okay, it's just a mask. The break is done, here, put your mask back on. As they sit up here, they say it's okay that they cannot breathe properly, it's okay that they can't smile to their friends, it is okay because they say it is okay, but it is not okay. It is okay that they can't play with them or sit with them, it's okay that they can't see or understand social cues, it's okay that they will not know how to socialize. All of these things will shape them into being the people they will become, but this is okay. Here's your mask break, your chance to breathe. Get your lungs full, enjoy your breath for a minute, but not for too long, because then you will think it's okay to smile with your friends, you will think it's okay to have the freedom to say what you want to say, and that is not okay. Your mask break is done, put your mask back on, crisscross applesauce, over the nose it goes. When you look at her, what do you see? You don't see a child, you see funding. Look at her. What do you see? This is not a little girl, it's your salary. She's not a child, she's a dollar sign. Because if you saw her, if you saw this, you would see that this is abuse and you would stop it. I did not give you a mask break, over the nose it goes. And in five years, seven years, 10 years, when they ask you about these times and they ask you what you did, parents, what part did you have, what will you say? Will your aunt- Will your answer make you proud, or will you walk away? Will you say, we just complied and we did what we were told? Or will you say you did everything you could and you fought for them? Can you look at your child, my child, and say that this is okay? Your job is to advocate for our kids, it's the principal's job, the teacher's job, our job as parents. Our job as parents is to advocate for our children. And how sad is it that we need to advocate for our children to breathe? So put your mask back on, over the nose it goes. But what do I know, because it's just a mask, right?
Russell Harrison.
Good evening. My name is Russell Harrison and I am a Schrader class of 2020 graduate. I was serving as the vice president of my class when, in March 2020, the unthinkable happened. At the time, we had been planning senior year events, such as the senior trip and ball. As any teacher or student will tell you, there is a tangible excitement in the air in any high school when these events are coming up. Four years of high school and this is our promised payoff at the end. But in the end, there was no senior trip, there was no ball either. Many of us lost out on what very well could have been a high point in our lives. But I haven't come here tonight to complain about being a victim of the pandemic. There are many that have suffered far worse. My last, my class lost out on part of our lives, sure. And yet, we took that loss with dignity, because there are more important things in life than school trips and dances. We understood that we are being asked to make a sacrifice to protect our community. It was a painful choice, but it was an easy one. Over a year later, the sacrifice we are being asked to make is far less significant. Apart from getting a vaccination, a simple face covering is all we are being asked to do. It's cheap, it's easy, and it has a minimal impact on the learning experience. But perhaps most importantly, it is a proven method for reducing the rate at which a respiratory virus can spread. For this reason...
Each speaker has the privilege of the floor. It is not your right to interrupt. Please do not interrupt the speaker. If we have to, if we have to call a recess, we will. So we only respect the people that you want to hear from.
We just don't want to hear harmful lies that propagate of the past.
It is his right to speak. Please refrain from that.
For this reason, I urge the board to avoid bowing under the pressure from a vocal minority and uphold the common sense universal mask mandate in district buildings this fall. Please make this small sacrifice now, because if we're not careful, we'll be forced to make larger sacrifices later on. Get vaccinated, wear a mask, and help our community move on. After all this, it's the least we can do. Thank you for your time.
Nicholas Filone.
The next speak, the next speaker has the privilege of the floor. We do not want to have to clear the room, we do not want to have to call a recess. It is absolutely everybody's privilege to speak.
Please continue.
Good evening. My name is Nick Filone, I am a Webster Schrader class of 2020 graduate and a rising sophomore at Lemoine College. With my mother and three sisters, one of whom is medically fragile, currently in the district, I, like many of you, have a vested interest in this decision. I come tonight to try to ensure their safety for this coming school year. I understand there are a lot of opponents to mask wearing in schools here tonight, and while I would be happy to explain the effects of COVID-19 on the body, the functioning of mRNA vaccines, and the danger that variants pose...
Let him speak.
My explanation would be no more helpful than those of countless professionals who have tried to do the same. For many of the people behind me, it seems that political bias supersedes science. Thus, I will appeal to the board instead. According to the Centers for Disease Control, Monroe County is listed as having a high level of community transmission and over 40% of its population unvaccinated as of August 13th, 2021. The population of the district likely follows these statistics closely, especially with elementary-age students and some middle schoolers unable to receive the vaccine. With the added complication of the Delta variant being significantly more transmissible and dangerous in children than the original COVID-19 strain...
Please do not interrupt.
Outbreaks among unvaccinated individuals could get out of hand quickly and might force another shutdown. Exposures and infections, not unlike the recent COVID-19 exposures at the Webster School Bus Safety Event, would pose a threat to students and employees, as well as giving the virus ample means to grow more resilient. A district-wide mask mandate would provide students with a safer environment to learn as masks are proven to reduce the transmission of airborne viruses.
Do we have to clear the room? Is it really impossible to let somebody speak? Want to leave?
Should I continue?
I'd like to call a point of order, please. I make the motion to recess.
They are each individual speakers, just as the previous speakers were. That's okay. That's okay. If we, if we have to adjourn the meeting, we will. Please, please respect the privilege of the floor.
Excellent, thank you. Look no further than my first year at college for proof of this, proof of mask effectiveness. Lemoine had extremely strict masking and social distancing regulations. That allowed us to maintain extremely low case numbers and stay in person for the entire year. While I would like to continue speaking on the science of this issue, I want other intelligent people to have the chance to speak as well. I will conclude by urging the board not to give in to politics, convenience, and fallacies. I urge the district to continue following the science and the statistics and give credibility to the biological principles that are taught across its schools. I thank the board for keeping my family safe this school year by reopening with a mask mandate. And to those in opposition, I urge you to read my biology textbook. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam.
Thank you, go ahead.
Good evening, board and community members. My name is Sam Filone and I am entering my senior year at Schrader High School. I am the person whose education you are arguing over tonight. I'm here to express to you the concerns I have for myself and my fellow classmates, as well to extend my gratitude to the board for protecting us in the year ahead. I am here of my own free will, I have not been told what to say or how to feel. In regards to last school year, I am extremely grateful to have had a senior, a junior year with no lockdown. I attribute this solely to the guidelines followed last year. The ability to have my junior prom without a mask on happened as a direct cause of masking all year long, as well as the ability to take my AP classes with a teacher in front of me and compete in my tennis sectionals. I felt fulfilled, but most importantly, I felt safe. I would like to experience all aspects of my senior year with a sense of security. This can only be achieved with the masking of all students of all ages.
Let her speak.
Please, she has the privilege of the floor.
I am a child and I am not suffocating. We will all suffer from an outbreak. I feel infinitely safer knowing the plan for September involves the whole population being masked, because as much as you would like this to be over, it is not. The experiences and education your children will get during this time isn't perfect. A global pandemic isn't perfect, but getting vaccinated and wearing masks will get us closer to the world you think we're living in. I thank the board for putting the safety of Webster students over the entertainment of their parents. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, please. Jack Young. Please, the next speaker, please, Jack Young. Who's next? I want Brendan Casey to speak, he's the last one, really.
All right, I'd like to thank the board for their service to our community and appreciate what you do. I am a Webster resident and I do have three children and they are school age. And I just wanted to speak to the matter of critical race theory. And I speak as a former teacher, I am a pastor currently, and, but I want to speak as a father. And I grew up in Wayne County, my parents both attended school there, and something radically changed in 1970s when they were way at public university and their worldview, and that was they received the Lord Jesus Christ as their Savior and they, they found equal footing at the foot of the cross. And I grew up in a pastor's home and we were taught the universal importance of every single soul. And what we're taught from scripture is that God does not see color, but God sees eternal souls. And I had the privilege of traveling to different countries, I've had all different people groups inside our very own home and even inside my very own room, growing up as we boarded different missionaries and things along that nature. For nine years, I pastored outside the gates of Fort Drum, New York. And as you know, the military, the US Army 10th Mountain Division's a very diverse group. Not only is there diverse people that are in the military there, but also people from all nations, languages, continents, and join our army, our church was a very diverse church. And our children grew up just with all different shapes and sizes and colors and languages being spoken among their peers, among their peer groups. And something I observed, not only my own children, but also the children that attended the church, is that children are not racist, that children do not look at race, and they get along very well with each other, and that is not observable in their own mindset and their own mind frame. And I do believe that racism is taught by adults to children. And they have to be illuminated or woke to the differences in race and also gender or also is the matter of being handicapped or elsewhere. And so, one of the things that I think if you had a good parent, you would realize that if you ever judged somebody by the color of their skin, that you as a parent would come down very harsh upon that person, upon that child. And so, I, here's why I'm against critical race theory, is because of this matter, is I think that we are opening up our kids' minds to the differences between one another instead of what unites them, that the scripture tells me that we are all of one blood and that the Lord Jesus Christ died for all. And so, it took just as much of Christ's blood being shed to purchase my soul's pardon as it was somebody who lives overseas who does not look like me. Another reason why I'm against critical race theory is because I am very proudly an American. I am third-generation immigrant, but the first generation lost their foreign identity and they became Americans. This is not supposed to be a diverse group of people. First and foremost, we're supposed to be a melting pot. We are Americans first and we hold up an American ideal, united. So what should be taught in our schools is what unites us, not what divides us. Now, I understand there's national sins, and it was because our nation was founded by sinners. And in every generation, there's saints and there's sinners, there's good and there's bad. So we look back in history and we say, yes, slavery was and is today absolutely wrong. But these men who wrote this document, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal and endowed by their creator with, Creator with certain inalienable rights, that they were thinking ahead of their time. A lot of us have ideals that we ourselves were not able to live up to, but America has progressed and is progressing, and I think what we're doing is revert, reversing the progress that was made. I lived long enough to see our first black president, I've seen, I've lived long enough to see our first orange president. Right now, in the city of New York, our attorney general's a black woman, the mayor of Rochester's a black woman, the New York State Senate leader is a black woman, the New York State Assemblyman is a black man. And these people have gotten to this position, not by the color of their skin, but by their color of their character and by their hard work ethic. It is very dangerous to teach equality of outcome, that is called communism. And so, you can rename critical race theory to something different, but ultimately, the end result thereof is the idea that America is intrinsically racist and then at our foundation that in all of our systems, in all of our institutions, in, in all of the structures that are set up, that they're foundationally and systematically racist, and the only way to undo this is to undo the whole system and create a vacuum, and then we become Cuba. We become a third world country. And so, this is just my own thoughts as a father. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Brendan Casey.
It's Brendan Casey, live on Sage Brookway. Thanks for the opportunity to talk, appreciated hearing all the voices, pro and con, for all the different things we've talked about. I think it's important to realize that there are pros and cons to what we, what we're talking about. Webster, somebody said we represent, have to represent the people of Webster, and we do. There's 45,000 people in Webster. There's about 100 people here, I don't know, maybe it's 200, I don't know, maybe it's 50. But it's, this job, the job of the board is to represent the 45,000 people, not just a few. Now, a couple comments. One is, thanks for the culture presentation. I don't think in the, in the culture presentation, there was anything that contradicted with any of the comments on, against critical race theory, because there was no critical race theory in the culture presentation. There's no New York State critical race theory curriculum. There is no New York State critical race theory curriculum. And by the way, the school board doesn't get to choose the curriculum, the state sets the curriculum. So if you don't want to have critical race theory, you need to go to Albany. Talking to these people doesn't matter. Make you feel better, doesn't matter. But at any rate, I think the culture presentation, I don't think there's anything in there that people can argue with, whether it's from a religious perspective, from an anti-critical race theory perspective, if that's what you're doing, good job. And by the way, I used to be a senior manager at Xerox, and the main thing that limited people's careers was the soft skills. So people who, that's determined how far you went with soft skills. So I'm glad to hear that they're doing some work on soft skills. On the mask thing, good job getting it started, five days a week, that's great. Masks, no one likes masks, I get it, we all get it, nobody likes masks, but nobody likes not going to school either. So, we also know, all of us who've had kids in school know, that in September, everybody gets sick. The thing, whatever bug is out there goes through everybody. And it would be very easy to have this school district start, that first week, no masks, boom. boom. I don't know what percentage is needed to shut it down, but that percentage will happen, and everybody will be up in arms, "Oh my God, you're shutting down the school." So, don't like the masks, but it's better than shutting down the school. Now, if you, I don't like masks either, but I don't want to shut down the school. So, that's, that's the point of the masks. The school board doesn't want people to wear masks, but the school board doesn't want to shut down the school. You know, it was, and I also have to say that I did get a kick out of the Marxist comments, and, you know, those kinds of things. Because when I went to school, people said the same thing about our teachers, "They're all communists. Oh my God, this generation's going to go to hell." And yet, somehow, we're okay. Somehow, we're here, somehow, we're mostly the Republicans. The Republicans are growing. And yet, somehow, that happened, despite the fact that we were all indoctrinated by these communists. So it didn't, so I think it's just, we have to be patient with each other, we have to respect each other, we have to work together to make things better. Can things be better? Absolutely. But it's not going to get better by just arguing and yelling. It's not going to get better by not listening to each other. It's not going to get better if we don't jointly decide we're going to work together, and that my idea is the only good idea. If the idea, if that's the way it is, it's not going to get better. We can make it better, let's make it better.
Thank you. That concludes the business meeting this evening. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Shanna Second. Linda, all in favor? Have a nice evening, everyone, enjoy the rest of your summer, be safe, and happy, and healthy. Thank you.